I'd like to call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality which extends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Mr. Zarzaki, can you please call roll?
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Ms. Chick?
Here.
Mr. Kuzno?
Here.
Ms. Infante?
Here.
Ms. Stephens?
Here.
Zarzaki present, and Mr. Aquinto is absent with notice.
Thank you. Everybody received copy of the agenda, I would like to make a motion to add a nine F, which would be downtown group information by Ms. Infante. Is there a second?
I'll second, oh, go ahead, Amy.
A second by Ms. Stephens, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Do you have a motion?
Opposed? I didn't make a motion.
No, I need to amend, no, go ahead.
Okay, I made a motion to amend it, just add it.
Oh, I didn't hear that, I apologize.
Yeah.
I need to correct that right.
That's okay. First call, the call to the public, anyone wishing to address the planning commission, please step to the mic and state your name and address clearly. You have three minutes.
My clock's ticking. David Gordon, 55, 58 Helena Road. I'm glad we got the planner here tonight, because I was hoping that maybe you could address this issue. We have a member of the Board of Trustees who believes that there is, there are vehicles in our zoning, in our ordinances, and in our master plan that create preservation of land in our community, as in development rights being set aside for preservation. I understand that we have areas that are designed for agricultural and five acre housing, but I don't know that we have anything in our master plan for preservation. This one trustee says that in fact, we don't need a land preservation committee because we have these other vehicles to protect land. I don't actually think that we have something formally in our, in our documents that are definitely about preservation. So, maybe that could get addressed at some point, either at this meeting or privately with, with the members of the board, because some of them are a little confused on this issue, I think. That's all I had, really, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Seeing none, clarification from commissioners? None? Correspondence, Ms. Byrd? None? Public hearing, item eight, open and unroofed terraces, patios, and porches. I will go to the planner to present the summary, make a call to the public, for those that support or oppose, if there are any, three minute time limit. I make motion to open a public hearing, is there a second?
I'll support.
Support by Ms. Chick, any questions on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. The proposed amendment is to section thirty-six dash ninety-eight G one of the zoning ordinance, and this section is titled exemptions from area placement and height regulations. Almost all zoning ordinances have a section or a few sections that deal with exempting certain structures. This is the primary section that does that in Northfield Township's zoning ordinance, and currently, open and unroofed terraces, patios, porches, and awnings are classified as exempt structures. But it raises the question of how high can they be, how close to the lot line can they be? And in discussing these in some of the preceding planning commission meetings, a lot of these questions that we have raise even more questions. And so, ultimately, we concluded to propose them as being taken out of this section, having them subject to the regular setback requirements, but still exempting a lot of other structures, such as steps. Also, later in that section, there is an exemption for sidewalks and private driveways. We propose adding the phrase "at grade" before that, just so that it's clear that they're at-grade sidewalks and driveways, nothing that's elevated, that would have to comply with the setbacks. So, they're fairly straightforward, mostly housekeeping, but mostly to clarify that, if someone's doing a patio porch and unroof terrace, that it has to comply with the setback requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Is there any member of the public that would wish to comment on the public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing on proposed zoning ordinance amendment.
I'll support.
Support by Ms. Chick, any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, meeting's closed. Reports from committees, Board of Trustees, Ms. Chick?
The Board of Trustees met three times since the last time the Planning Commission met, a lot of it was housekeeping issues that we were taking care of. The two zoning amendments that were sent to the Board from the Planning Commission regarding the Horseshoe Lake and Whitmore Lake overlay district was approved and passed. The other regarding the Little Free Library, the sign posting, and the, oh my gosh, I can't think of the third one. It's gone. The, that packet of amendments was passed as well, that we talked about. Also, there was appointments made to the Land Preservation Committee, Lenora Zelenok is now the Board Representative, and Andy Locatos was appointed as a member. DDA also had appointments, Annie Aquinto, Denise Kabish, Kabish, I don't know if I'm saying that right. And so, those were done as well. They are still looking for people for the Board of Review, if anybody's interested in that, they haven't had any luck, so, you know, please contact the office. I think that's about it of anything, oh, the township manager's contract was approved, and the negotiations are ongoing with the township manager, and we'll look for an update.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. ZBA, Ms. Stephens?
Thank you, the ZBA has not met since our last commission meeting.
Thank you. Staff, Ms. Byrd? Thank you. Planning consultant, Mr. Sloan?
Yes, I have two items. The first is, there's a section of the zoning ordinance, and specifically, it's thirty-six dash ninety-three, nine hundred and thirty-six subsection B, and it's an unusual section that deals with variances, and whether conditional uses and PUDs are subject to variances. The way that it's written, it's very ambiguous in terms of what can be appealed and what can't be appealed. There's a couple different ways to read it, so, that might be something that should be amended soon. The, the issue comes from a case later in the agenda, the Ann Arbor Dog Club. The Ann Arbor Dog Club, it's a proposed special land use for the site. It happens that in our site plan review letter, we raised an issue that could make them have to apply for a variance. So, going back to section thirty-six dash nine thirty-six B, there's a question of whether someone who's applying for a conditional use permit can apply for a variance related to that. The short answer is they can, but the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act allows a community to prohibit applying for an appeal of a decision on a conditional use or a PUD. So, if there's a final decision on that conditional use, that decision can't be appealed to the zoning Board of Appeals, that would go straight to Circuit Court. Same with a PUD, if there's a PUD application that's denied, the Board of Zoning Appeals will not hear that appeal, that would go straight to Circuit Court. And the reason being is that there are certain actions that a community can take where it's appropriate to appeal those to the BZA, and other times when something as, as long as a conditional use process or a PUD process, where once the Planning Commission has taken final action on something, it should go straight to Circuit Court for any kind of appeals. But it doesn't address a dimensional variance related to a conditional use. Looking at the State Act, an applicant can apply for a dimensional variance, like in the case of the Ann Arbor Dog Club, if there's a change to the parking lot and they want to propose gravel, they can apply for a variance to have a gravel parking lot. If the building is too close to the lot line, they can apply for a setback variance. It doesn't increase or decreases the chance of them getting it, but it would clarify the fact that they have a right to go and appeal a dimensional variance. So, we recommend, at some point, amending the ordinance, just to clarify that. In the meantime, we'll proceed according to the State Act, but that is something, just to clarify both for the township and for applicants. The second item that I want to bring up is that we will be instituting a staff switch here at the Planning Commission meeting. To my right here is Paul Lippens, who many of you are familiar with. Paul is the project manager for the Northfield Community Park Master Plan, and the current ongoing downtown plan. And so, over the last several months, as some of my commitments have increased in other communities that I've been for several years, that in addition to Paul's growing role in Northfield Township and success here, it's a natural fit for Paul to take on a greater role in Northfield Township, and for me to be in more of a supporting role with zoning and plan review and things like that, where I might not spend as much time, but the community still gets as much, if not more, value by having Paul in a greater role. So, going forward, Paul will be the primary point of contact in attending most of the Planning Commission meetings, and I'll still be involved, but in a more supporting role. So, in the last several months, Paul has been more of a supporting role, working on plans, so, it's almost like a role reversal, where Paul will continue doing what he's doing, his role will grow, and my role will be lowered a little bit, supporting role, but still involved. So, if there are any questions about that, or anything like that, please let us know.
I, I'll say that I'm very happy to be taking on this role, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you, having the opportunity to work with the Downtown Planning Group, the DDA, and of course, I've worked with Marlene, the supervisor, closely, but I'm very happy to be taking on a role as the Planning Commission's support, and looking forward to good things.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Mr. Lippens, likewise, willing to continue on and look forward to Parks and Recs Committee, Mr. Aquinto's not present, and we'll go to F, which was the Downtown Planning Group, Development Group. Ms., Ms. Infante?
The Downtown Planning Group met on April twenty-fourth and June twenty-sixth. April twenty-fourth, they initiated a series of public outreach initiatives focused on the Downtown Strategic Plan, keeping in mind how the public information or the input that they would receive from the public might affect future land use plans, and the overall connectivity of the, the framework, including the Northfield Village and its potential designs. They have since had two surveys, an ice cream social, and are talking about perhaps setting up a kiosk, just a really impressive, robust, public outreach effort to get a lot of information input from, from the residents. And they're moving forward very rapidly, and have a series of dates and target deadlines that are really quite impressive, and Paul would know more about that, but in a nutshell.
Mr. Lippens, would you like to add anything at this time?
I would share that the Ice Cream Social on July eighth was very well attended, more than fifty people, and a lot of comments, a lot of conversations, and I think the intent of holding that event at seventy-five Barker was to activate that space and get people excited about the potential in downtown. And I just think it was a really great event, kids eating ice cream, adults eating ice cream, and just enjoying talking about the possibilities for downtown. So, we're excited at turning, turning those ideas around into a plan in the next couple months, and there'll be more to come.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, item A, proposed zoning ordinance amendment, open and unroofed terraces, patios, and porches. I make a motion that the proposed language be forwarded to the Board of Trustees for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zarzaki. Any questions on this motion? Discussion, Ms. Chick?
I just had a question, and it might sound a little silly, but I did mention it to Mr. Roman earlier, the language regarding the flagpoles, hydrants, laundry drying equipment, trellises, recreation equipment, and so forth. Laundry drying equipment, are we speaking about like clotheslines? Or, it's, my question was, if somebody decided to put their dryer out in the front lawn, this says he can do it.
The intent is clotheslines.
Okay. Can we make it more specific, so somebody just doesn't?
Yeah, we could put, we could take out laundry drying equipment, and just put laundry clotheslines, take out drying equipment.
Ms., to Ms. Chick and Mr. Sloan, and I made this comment to Ms. Chick when she did ask me about it, we went through the process, we reviewed this a couple times, and went out for public notice.
Oh, okay.
With the current language. I would, I would refrain from making any language changes at this point. I think like your concern with that type of scenario, I think it could fall under ordinance enforcement issue, but I would not like to change the language once we've been through the process at this point. I mean, your point's well taken.
No, I, I don't disagree, I just could picture that one person that would do that and say, but it says right here, I can do it. So, then you got one ordinance saying one thing, and another ordinance saying something else, so.
Right.
But, I, okay, no, that's fine.
Do you agree, Mr. Sloan?
Yeah, that's fine, I think it'd be rare for someone to, to do that, not unheard of, but.
No. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chick, are there any other comments? Mr. Zarzaki?
Yeah, basically, for moving here, when I was in Whitmore Lake, on the council there, we went through something similar. People that live on the lake have a problem understanding what is the front of their house, and they will put laundry drying equipment, the trellis that has the clothesline on it, in both front and back, because to them, they have two front yards. So, that would be for those people on a lake, very confusing, that they could not put up a trellis to have laundry drying equip, or laundry trellis up. So, I mean, just from past experience that I had, living on Wolverine Lake, this was several, you know, twenty years ago, but we went through something similar, and had a lot of problems, people complaining like mad that we were preventing them from drying their clothes, so.
Head.
No.
It, it didn't look weird reading it, so, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, the motion is to forward this, we have a second. Mr. Zarzaki will do a roll call vote.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes.
Thank you, motion approved, motion's approved, thank you. I'll go to item E B of ten, proposed update to zoning ordinance regarding sign regulations. Mr. Sloan, am I correct in that we want to table this at this time?
Correct, we just wanted to give a status update.
Oh, go ahead, if you'd like.
It's, we have a short memo dated July thirteenth, just summarizing what was discussed at the June seventh Planning Commission meeting regarding the motion to make changes to the sign ordinance based on some of the concerns that we had noted in our review letter. And so, we just wanted to let you know that those are still ongoing, and we'll have something by the end of the month in terms of a draft.
Okay, thank you. Item eleven, new business, discussion of Ann Arbor Dog Training Club, Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider the proposed site plan and conditional use permit, and determine if it's complete enough to call for a public hearing. We believe that the, the application is complete enough to call for the public hearing in terms of including everything that's required, according to the zoning ordinance on the plan. There is a disagreement between the applicants and us in terms of how to classify the proposed use in the proposed building. But first, we're in agreement on classifying the use in terms of a dog kennel or similar land use. So, we're in agreement that it is a conditional use, a public hearing must be held. If you recall, several months ago, the use of kennels was incorporated into the special land use standards of the General Industrial District. And the reason being, one of the reasons, and probably the major reason, though not the only reason, is that Ann Arbor Dog Club, Training Club was in existence, and in the future, if they may want to expand, they, at the time, they had plans, and currently, there was nothing in the General Industrial District that would have allowed that use. Although the similar use regulations were there, there was nothing in that district to which it was similar. So, we recommended putting kennels as conditional uses in the GI District, because that type of use, kennels and industrial uses probably make good neighbors, where the noise and the impacts don't really bother each other. And so, that amendment has been adopted, it's part of the zoning ordinance, and so the applicants have made an application to construct a new eighteen thousand square foot building on the lot, towards the southern side, south of the parking lot. And there are two areas that relate to the zoning ordinance where we see nonconformities. The first is the fact that the parking lot is gravel, the ordinance requires the parking lot to be paved. Now, if there are no changes to the parking lot, that may be an existing nonconformity that we can allow to continue, but we've asked for some more information, just to clarify any proposed changes to the parking lot, if any. The second is the major disagreement, and that is that the applicants don't want to be classified as a kennel, they want to be classified under what's called similar uses, because they do dog training, they don't do boarding, they don't do any of the uses that are defined as a kennel. Kennel is boarding, care, breeding, things like that. So, when we originally amended the zoning ordinance to include kennels in the General Industrial District, when we talked to the Ann Arbor Dog Club, and they didn't apply for that amendment, the township did it on its own, but they saw it, and they said, okay, well, that's, that's fine, but we're not a kennel, we are a dog club. And so, we said, we can put kennels as a general township policy, and under similar uses, we can classify a dog training club as a similar use, once kennels is in General Industrial, and there's a related use. So, they, they were in agreement with that principle. But where we disagree is on the setback of the buildings. For kennels, the minimum side yard setback from a property line is two hundred feet. And their building is less than two hundred feet from the eastern lot line. And so, where our disagreement is, is that under kennels, we've done findings based on the ordinance in our site plan letter, and referenced it in our conditional use letter, that that new building must be two hundred feet from a lot line. And the applicants object to that, stating that, well, we're not a kennel, so the kennel regulations shouldn't apply, we are a similar use, so none of those regulations in a kennel apply. And our position on that is that, under the kennel regulations, with those setbacks, it references buildings housing dogs. Specifically, I can read from, from the section here, "Buildings in which animals are kept, animal runs, and exercise areas shall not be located in any required front, side, or rear yard setback area, and shall be located at least three hundred feet to the nearest edge of a public right of way, and two hundred feet from any neighboring side or rear lot line." So, the regular front yard setback of the General Industrial District applies, but that two hundred foot setback, we would consider imposing that on the side and rear lot lines. So, it's, it's a building in which an animal is kept, and the disagreement is, it's a regulation under kennels, and the Ann Arbor Dog Club says they're not a kennel, so that's the major disagreement. And again, what we get back to is that, yes, you're a similar use in the district, which allows the use to be there, but the use to which you're similar are kennels, and that we think that those regulations do apply. So, that's something that we can discuss at the public hearing, or sometime during the process, in terms of the use itself, because that's mostly an ordinance site plan item, where their options under the two hundred foot setback would be to move the building farther to the west, and meet the two hundred foot setback. They have a stormwater pond proposed in that area now. So, compliance with the ordinance would be option one. Option two would be, they could apply for a variance for the setback, in which case, the major questions are raised of why can't the stormwater pond be moved? And there are more technical site plan items, items perhaps for the engineer, and items, if they're considered by the Board of Zoning Appeals with a variance request, would be done at that time. So, there are a couple of open items there in terms of how they react to the ordinance interpretation that's been put in the letters. But for the sake of the site plan and the conditional use, if they were to maintain their position, and either decide to move the building, or apply for a variance, we still think that the site plan is complete enough to hold a public hearing, and at the time of making motions and taking actions, to figure out at that point, what they intend to do with the building. So, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Yes, well, I, I do have questions, but I guess my comment would be that I would prefer to see these details worked out prior to coming to the Planning Commission for any kind of further action. These are not, these are not minimal, you know, issues regarding their site plan, so I would prefer the details be worked out. I also agree that, myself, that the similar uses to the kennel, and I believe that they should comply with the kennel setbacks. Now, the option to get a variance, or to, to meet those requirements, I think should be hashed out prior. I don't, I don't want to bring it to the Planning Commission in that state. But there was other, while, while I'm commenting and asking questions, I guess I'll go first. There were several dated reports regarding this Ann Arbor Dog Training Club. The first one being, you know, that I saw was from around in December of twenty sixteen, regarding, you know, as you commented, the conversation, them being similar to kennel, and it was from the zoning administrator. There was a OHM, I'm going by date now, the next dated one would be the OHM report. And in there, they had minimal items, which I was kind of surprised, being that they're proposing a gravel parking lot and so forth. None of that was made mention here, and I know you can't speak for OHM, and no one's here to represent them. But as of Jan, as of June twenty-third, twenty seventeen, none of those items were found in, in that review. That's kind of a red flag to me, but I would like to see more addressed by them regarding these other issues that we spoke of that are open-ended. The next one was July seventh, your, your first report regarding the site plan review, and we, you know, several pages, without getting into a lot of detail on that. Your end recommendation was the following items, one through eight, on the last page, be added to their plans prior to Planning Commission action. And I know there may have been some, perhaps progress, if you want to call it that, since this report, I don't know. But eight items which are listed, I think are significant enough to be readdressed before coming to us. So, then you provided a July tenth report, the conditional use review, stating what, you know, what you just commented on in your, in your address here tonight, regarding that they are similar to kennels. You went through the few pages to provide your report there, and additional details are required about any proposed changes to the park. So, my question at this time regarding that, has anything been provided by the applicant regarding these additional details that are in your recommendation, as far as the letter of July tenth?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then, the next day was July eleventh, we, there was a letter provided in our packet from Ann Arbor Dog Training Club, stating their position, which, you know, you're stating which, you know, you're stating that they have a disagreement regarding how they are classified as their use. They, they still, being in, in general industrial zoning with what they're proposing to do, they still don't meet the requirements, so as far as what they want to do. So, then, then the second paragraph of their letter is basically about how they're requesting to be classified similar and that it would eliminate needs to ask for a variance. And I want to clarify right now, tonight with you, that doesn't seem correct. This then, it says this then eliminated the need to ask for variances trying to meet kennel regulations. Even if they were, if you agreed that they're similar, that doesn't grant them to do anything on their proposed site plan that is in conflict with the ordinance, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
So, if, I'm saying that, and without the applicant being here tonight, I'm saying that although the applicant may think just because they're classified as a similar use would eliminate their need to get a variance or to comply with the ordinance is incorrect.
Yeah, the way, the way that I look at it. And that's also because, suppose there was a similar use in industrial that had to do with manufacturing and processing, and someone had a similar use that wasn't quite that, but something similar, we would want to impose those manufacturing and processing regulations on whatever that similar use was, just to have that hook into the zoning ordinance that, yeah, you're similar, but what are you similar to? And how is that similar use regulated? So, when it comes to the care of dogs and overnight care, those things we don't really have to worry about because that's not their business. But when they have a building housing dogs, I think that is an applicable regulation that, that should be imposed.
Right. That, that would be my, my interpretation of it also. And I hope that we can get that clarified and proceed with that, you know, further down the road. One other question regarding the site plan, there's no mention of lighting, the parking lot lighting, anything to that effect. Can you address any of that?
Yeah, let me scroll over to the comment where we dealt with lighting.
I may have overlooked it, but...
Oh, yeah. Sheet, C three of the plans included lighting and photometrics. And it included cut sheets and details of the fixtures. And based on that information, we don't foresee any issues with the light trespass onto neighboring properties.
Right. So, that, but that's a proposed lighting system of the parking lot or the, the building? What, what is that exactly?
Let me thumb over to it and make sure that...
Or would that be something that they're requesting a variance on?
They wouldn't be requesting a variance for any of the lighting. I don't think there would be, I don't think there would be grounds for any kind of a, a request there. These look like wall-mounted fixtures. And they have, they also have two poles in the parking lots.
Okay.
And it's, it's well under one foot candle outside the parking lot. So, at the lot lines, it would be almost zero.
But those are new proposed parking lot fixtures or the existing?
They look like they're proposed.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any further questions, but...
Actually, they're existing. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Take that back, they're existing poles.
Yeah, from the size, you know, I was able to see, I was, it was hard to indicate. But thank you for the clarification. Any other comments by the other commissioners, questions? Mr. Kuzno? Mr. Kuzno?
Yeah, just real quick, so, I'm a little confused. There's no action tonight, right? We're not looking, not asking for action tonight, is that correct, or are we?
No action on the application. If there, if there was to be any action, it would be on whether to set a public hearing or to defer action. There wouldn't be any up or down.
So, you have, do you have a motion on the table, Larry, to, to...
No, not at this time.
Nothing, okay. So, slightly confused then, and I know it's probably because I'm not really up to speed. But if they were to be considered similar use, what would they be, what would they be similar to in that, in that zoning district? Anything? Is that, is that part of the problem here?
Well, I think it's part of the problem of, of how we interpret it versus how the applicants interpret it. Because before the zoning ordinance was amended to include kennels as a special land use, they existed in the general industrial and there was nothing even remotely close to a kennel. So, when we say similar uses, we told them that it doesn't really apply because you're not similar to anything. You know, a dog kennel is not similar to a processing facility. So, when we added kennels, it was adding an existing use into the general industrial where they still said, "We're not a kennel." And I think where the zoning administrator's letter was coming from is that, yes, you're not a kennel, but by kennel being in general industrial, you now have a use that's similar where you can make an application as a similar use.
And before, they couldn't even, they couldn't even have a shadow of a hope to get in there then, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. So, when, when you, when you, when you attach yourself to something, you kind of have to go along with that. Whether or not you fit that exact definition, you're kind of accepting that definition by doing that. Is that what we're, basically, our stance is?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Chick?
I just wanted to comment. I don't, I agree with Mr. Roman's assessment that it really makes us more comfortable as planning commissioners to be able to push something forward as far as a public hearing when we have some of these things ironed out and, because there's a lot. My second comment is that when, these little plans that we get, they're really hard to read. We sometimes get the bigger ones. Is there a reason why we didn't get big plans?
I, I don't know.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Online? And they're on there and you can zoom in and zoom out to see what's going on better?
Okay. If you have a good computer. All right, just a comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Stephens?
I don't see wall-mounted lights on the elevations. Did I, I'm sorry, did I hear you say they were proposing wall-mounted?
They are. On page C three, they have some proposed ones. Some of the, some of the ones are, are existing on their existing elevations. But on the proposed building, they've got a proposed spec.
Okay. All right. And did they ever ask to go to the Z B A for an ordinance interpretation on the similar use? Do you know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And finally, can, are they permitted to do stormwater detention in the required setback?
I think that they can. A lot of stormwater ponds are located in setbacks.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Seeing none, I think that's, is that adequate for you, Mr. Sloan, Mr. Lippens? That, how we should proceed with this in the future for this particular site? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to eleven B, discussion of section thirty-six dash nine, thirty-six B, powers and duties of the Board of Appeals, zoning board of appeals. Mr. Sloan touched upon this earlier tonight with his comments under the planning consultant comments. Actually, I posed this question to Mr. Sloan in looking at not only this particular Ann Arbor Dog Club plan review, but if we were to have others that were conditional use. If you, if you read our, our ordinance literally, it would, it's, it says that the zoning board would not be able to rule or hear on a conditional use permit, which this is. But I understand, and Mr. Sloan made it clear via email, my question to him last week. And it's not, the way I'm interpreting it would not be in compliance with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. So, I'm, I'm glad that we can have a brief discussion on this again. And I'll let Mr. Sloan take it from here and regarding more, further comment if he wishes. But I think it's just a slight language change in that particular section so that we, we would be considered in compliance with the Zoning Enabling Act and there would be no further issues at the township level. Mr. Sloan?
That's correct. And, and we can make a very simple modification to that to make it read more consistent with the Zoning Enabling Act. And then, I think I'll just, as a precursor to the zoning administrator's report, the zoning administrator has been identifying issues that she comes up with in the course of her reviews when the ordinance is unclear or conflicting or could be improved. So, as things come up, she has been trying to raise those issues so that they come to the planning commission level for, some of them are very simple fixes, some of them are much larger issues. The one that we're talking about now is a fairly small issue. But if we come up with, say, a batch of amendments or a few different things, they could probably move all along together.
That's, that's fine. Can you touch upon the, the actual, and you did mention it during your comments, the actual language interpretation of conditional use permit? How the, the zoning enabling act uses a term, but it can be also as a special use or something to that effect? Can you touch upon that?
Yeah, the, the zoning enabling act calls them special land uses. So, as they're commonly known by the law, special land uses is a pretty standard word. But many communities in Michigan use the phrase conditional uses. Whether it's just an old way of doing it or carrying that forward. And at the end of the day, it really doesn't make much of a difference, except for, you know, the language of it. In some cases, if we do wholesale comprehensive updates to zoning ordinances, sometimes we'll bring that up as an issue of saying, if you call them conditional uses, let's call them special uses. And some communities like to continue to call them special, or conditional uses and in which case, it doesn't make much of a difference. It's just a different way of reading it in the law. And over the long run, maybe harder to, to look at it in the law if it's kind of forgotten and people wonder, "What are these conditional uses?"
Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything more on it. And if we can address that with any further issues of the language in the zoning ordinance that comes up and we can deal with them together, that would be appreciated, Mr. Lippens. Any other questions, comments on that item? No, seeing none. We'll move to item C, the zoning administrator quarterly report. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. This was a particularly busy quarter for the zoning administrator. She had reviewed a lot of different permits and had broken them down in terms of the type of development for each type of permit. In addition, sometimes there are larger scale developments or non-residential developments that are a little bit more complex. And sometimes, in the long run, they end up back to the planning commission or they end up with the Board of Zoning Appeals or, you know, just even if it becomes a township board matter, a lot of times, the zoning administrator tries to put those in the report just to note them as issues and that the community is aware that she's had correspondence with applicants about that. Sometimes on, on some of the addresses there, you know, there's a little bit of time spent in terms of getting the applicant towards compliance. Sometimes if there's an application that's non-compliant, you know, their permit oftentimes will be denied. But in almost every case, the zoning administrator tries to give the applicant some options for what they could do in order to comply. Or if they have follow-up questions, she tries to work with them to have a compliant application and, and work within the zoning ordinance. So, as you see on page two, at the top there, there's a total of five applications that were denied. And she goes into some detail in terms of why. So, this report, it's, it's kind of a two-way street. You know, we'll, we'll present the report. But if there's any, ever anything that you, you know, hear about in the community or that you see in the report or, or something like that where you have suggestions for us of, you know, what we could be doing in terms of ordinance amendments or working on applications or, you know, things to change in the report, let us know and, and we're happy to, to go and do that. And then, the zoning administrator also lists any onsite meetings. Some of these onsite meetings can be just a matter of meeting with applicants to have a, you know, pre-application meeting or to go over a number of things. But sometimes they're pre-application meetings for what may be site plans in the future. And then, finally, there's the, in addition to the issues that she's noted in the zoning ordinance, there's some of the administrative items in terms of creating checklists and working with the township officials and staff to implement better procedure policies. Doing so is never easy in any community, so oftentimes, there's nothing unique about that. It's just a matter of having forms and checklists and procedures. And it does take time to start up, but once they're instituted and, and they're, they become easy to use, it's a benefit to the community in the long run as applicants better understand the procedures and the ordinance requirements and creates fewer problems in the long run. Back up to the zoning items, the zoning administrator had noted three. The first was identify the need for including temporary use standards in the zoning ordinance. There was one item that, where someone, I think, was proposing a firework tent. And there were some standards that were ambiguous in the temporary use standard. So, that's something that we may want to look at in the future and something we can ask the zoning administrator specifically, what could be a remedy for, for solving that before the twenty eighteen fireworks season. The second was the need to clarify some of the setbacks for detached accessory structures. We've talked about that conflict before, the zoning administrator and I. So, that's something that we may look for a suggestion from her. And then, finally, she had noted the need to have the Whitmore Lake, Horseshoe Lake overlay district. And when her and I communicated about this, I told her basically at the planning commission level, last year, we did the text just, just to get that right. And the map was never done until recently. So, I told her that that map was being done, but nonetheless, she included in the report as an item where it needs to be addressed. So, one of the three is, is well on its way to being addressed. I think that amendment will take effect at the end of the month or early August. The other two are items to address in the long run with the zoning ordinance. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Any comments on the report? Any other from the commissioners? Ms. Chick?
Yep, I really appreciate the quarterly report. It's something that we've been looking for. I also wanted to mention that the Board of Trustees is getting a similar report, not quite as detailed. It's basically kind of a spreadsheet. And ours was, I think it's going to be a monthly report. In June, there were fourteen applicants. There were, I believe, three applicants, three or four were denied and four, three or four were approved with conditions. So, there's a lot going on in the township, particularly in the month of June. So, hopefully, it continues. But it, she lists the, the, the reason it was denied as well so that we're aware in case we get phone calls about why this happened. So, it's a, it's a good asset and a tool that we'll be using going forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree. Although it's a quarterly report to us, so there may be contact to either Board of Trustee members or planning commission members in the interim until we get the report. So, we don't know all the details. And I haven't really gotten many, but if I do, I refrain any, you know, any opinion or comments because I don't know all the details. So, I appreciate having this report. And I know that's, it's at times a daunting task to, to do, to be the zoning administrator and deal with potential applicants or people with questions. And, and sometimes they don't get the answer that they want to hear. And so, some of the feedback that we hear indicates that Ms. Christian is, is doing her, her job. And in the past, I haven't, not had any issues with her interpretations and I'm, I'm happy with her performance, so...
Thank you.
Any others? Ms. Stephens?
I would just like to say, as the, the commissioner who's on the zoning board of appeals, I appreciate the fact that we have not met but one time this year. It means that Vidya is doing her job. She's pushing towards compliance with the ordinance. So, and when we do meet, her reports are accurate and detailed. So, it makes it easy as a, as a Z B A member to make an appropriate decision. So, I appreciate the report and I appreciate the fact that she really is doing her job and trying very hard to, to comply with the ordinance and pushing for development that does comply.
Okay, so moving on, approval of the minutes. Everybody receive copy of the June 7th regular meeting minutes? I hear a motion? Well, let's make, I'll make a motion to, to approve the minutes and dispense with reading. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments on the motion? Go ahead, Ms. Chick.
On page two, under nine reports, nine E parks and recreation, it says Iaquinto reported 40, community garden has 40 plots. I just think 40 should not be there.
Okay.
Nine E parks and recreation, it says Iaquinto reported 40, community garden. I don't, I just think the 40 is not supposed to be there. Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Go to the final call to the public. Any, any resident or anyone wishing to address the, the planning commission tonight, please step up to the microphone. Seeing none? Yes, sir? You can, if you want to come up, you need to state your name and address. You, you can state your name and address and then- Okay, I can address that under my comments to you. Is, is that all you have, though? Certainly, and you can also speak with the McKennel representatives here because the zoning administrators through their office too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comments, we'll move on to comments from the commissioners. Sir, I'll, I'll address that with you after the meeting, it's no problem. I'd like to, again, welcome Mr. Lippens taking over the planning consultant duties, and thank Mr. Sloan for all of his work in his past year, two, two years? Three years?
About a year, a little-
Okay, year, two, okay, going on to, sorry. Appreciate all, all your work and efforts and hate to see you go. I'm sure we'll cross paths in the future.
Definitely, thank you.
Any other commissioner? Yes, Ms. Infante?
Just really briefly about the dog training club. They're really good people, and they add value to the community. They do a lot of educational rescue work, and it's unfortunate that we received the application prematurely. We want to be able to approve things. I can see that it says on their application ASAP, so obviously they're, they're anxious to get moving on it, but we want to support the development and improvement of businesses that are here, and we really need to be given all of the information that we need to make that decision. We're not being obstructive in any way, and I hope they understand that, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Mr. Kuznul? Ms. Stephens?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Sloan for his good work for us and welcome Mr. Lippens.
Thank you. Mr. Zarzaki?
Again, thank Mr. Sloan, welcome Mr. Lippens. We've been more than happy with his performance of the other groups, and I'm sure we'll be happy with his performance with ours, and that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
I don't think I can add anything else to that. I, you know, met Mr. Lippens a couple of times, and Mr. Sloan, you've done very good work for us, and we're, this isn't the end. It's, you know, it's not like you're going away forever, you'll still be here, but really appreciate everything that you've done, and welcome to Mr. Lippens, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Like to announce the next regular meeting would be August 2nd, 2017. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion by Chick seconded by Mr. Zarzaki. Any questions on that motion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.